This time we'll call Mayor of the City of Shamokin Council meeting April 11th, 2022. Who asked that you write for the pledge to the flag and remain standing for a moment of prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
Amen. Before we get started, would everybody please make sure they sign the signing sheet? Thank you. Mr. Slavien, will you roll call?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Robyn?
Here.
Mrs. Adams?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer? Absent. Mayor Albrecht?
Here.
Three present, one absent. Do we have any presentations at this time?
No, sir.
Any bids?
Yes, sir.
The bids I have were for the bucket truck that I discussed, that we discussed at the workshop meeting. And then there is a welding machine. And they're, these were properly advertised. Minimum bid for the bucket truck was a thousand dollars. And the minimum bid for the, what they call 1980 Miller tow behind welder, minimum bid was 500. So at this time, I've I have a bid from JNS Landscaping for 1997 Ford F-Series bucket truck. And the bid price submitted was $2,870. I have another I have another bid here. John Britton, 1997 Ford bucket truck, bid amount $2,207. I have another bid, this is from Derek Snyder. His bid is $2,676.85 for the bucket truck. And $528 for the welder. The next bid I have is from Christian Wilkinson. The bid is for the Ford bucket truck of $1,303.33. And he doesn't bid on the other items just yet. I have a bid from James Slava from Northumberland. The bid is $1,863, no cents. That is for that is for the welder. He has a bid here for the bucket truck. He presented one chair. It looks like he's bidding.
He's just bidding on the bucket truck.
On the bucket truck.
Just the bucket truck, yeah.
And the final one. This is also from JNS Landscaping. This is for the tow behind welder. The bid price is $735. So with that said. It appears from the calculation that JNS Landscaping is the high bidder for both items. $2,870 for the bucket truck and $735 for the welder. They did meet the requirement. And Council, Mr. Greco, if I can go ahead and make a motion to accept those high bids?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Motion, Mr. Council? Okay, roll call?
Roll call.
Councilman Robyn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Adams?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Greco? That, do I have to be trying to be separate? Because I have listed as the bucket truck and the welder.
Well, I think the motion was to accept JNS for both.
Yes.
Was it?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay, so then we're okay?
That's all right.
Yes.
You're okay?
Yes.
Okay, do we want to notify him?
Yeah.
So Mayor, you can unwind. Do we have any correspondents?
No, sir.
Okay, citizens comment contingent upon business listed on the agenda.
He asked me in the agenda?
You could talk later if there's a part.
Can you let me accept your words in our way? I have a different place to go. I appreciate it. Member of the council, I want to thank you to help with the fundraiser for your grandchildren. And Doreen, you work in the highway, and Ricky, you work in the highway, you work in the highway, and and I really appreciate it. And we raised in the highway almost $10,900 some dollar. So it was good job, almost $11,000. So the total amount that we raised, $144,000. And I guarantee you guys, every penny got to them kids. And we try, we're gonna travel sometime this month, I cannot disclose the day, but we will go this month. Thank you very much.
Mr. Slavien, we thank you for asking us to help out.
What?
We enjoyed it immensely.
This is not just to the city help out, the all Northumberland town. Included Philadelphia, I reach out people in Boston, I reach out people in in Maryland. And, and everybody responded, and with everybody together, we did a, held a good job. And by the way, you're the one who was in the highway too.
Yes, I was.
She was dancing. You know how much you raised out there yourself?
No, how much?
$2,450.
Wonderful.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
No, that's okay. I was having fun.
Yeah.
And it helped slow traffic down.
It's good to everybody to work together.
Yes, it is.
And thank you again, and thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
I'm gonna be brief with my comments, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me tonight and giving me this opportunity to speak. Most of you know me as a reporter over the years, and I'm not here affiliated with reporting or with a news item in any way or shape or form, so I'm just trying to say I'm here as a citizen of Shamokin. I'm gonna be as brief as possible. First, I want to thank our first responders chief for the excellent work he did in that case over there on Landscaping, this situation.
Thank you.
Very difficult to see in the news, but wonderful on part of our local and state police. I'm gonna be very brief with my comments. Some troubling things that I have to say that, that really concerned me with regard to elections in recently, and I'm a citizen, I've been a resident of Shamokin my entire life. I have to say to all you ladies and gentlemen, that when I go to the polls and there's a candidate or a name on, on a list to be voted for, I truly go believing that my votes can count. And I'm just gonna read to you what I have down here, I'll make this very brief. Following our most recent local election, a newly elected member of Shamokin City Council was removed from office after the Northumberland County DA filed charges against him demanding his removal. I am not making these comments based upon the fact that I'm buddies with anyone here in this situation. Has nothing, absolutely no relationship to it. As a result of the ensuing court decision at the county level, the will of our city voters was ignored and overturned. What will the end result be when the voice of voters across this nation is repeatedly disregarded and thrown away no matter who the candidate may be? Why would a candidate's name be allowed to be placed on a ballot for people to vote for in the first place with a plan already set forth to remove them from office if elected? In other words, our voices at the ballot box no longer count, and electoral confidence is being systematically, and I use that word, eroded as a result. Within the past three years, we've witnessed questionable practices at the state and national levels involving fraudulent mail-in balloting where votes can no longer be properly tabulated and verified in a timely and accurate manner. Now, I'm without, with respect to time, I'm not going into everything else. I want to show you some evidence. This is from a local resident of Shamokin. Received postcards in the mail, and if anyone would like copies of these, I have copies made up that I can share with you all. There are postcards that were received in the mail, and the on the postcard, it is encouraging them to vote by mail and ballot. It says, "Go to vote.pA.gov." I looked this up. It is a state-run, state taxpayer-funded website built by the state government in Harrisburg, because I used to work for the state. And it is encouraging people, there are references to one political party on those sites. And there's another site in addition to that called postcardvoters.org. That site is telling them to go to vote.pA.gov. But these people don't give their last name, they give no contact information. I just want to make people in this community aware of what's going on. And I intend to take this to the next levels. I intend to protest it at the county level and at the state level, I'm not gonna stop. We're gonna, we have a group of us that are tired of electoral mispractices, if you will. And now, my, my next point here, and I, I want to be, I, I want to be kind, I'm trying to be kind when I say these things. I have no
That is the three minutes.
That's it?
You know, though, I do want to say one thing for your comments. Will you give me a second, man? Have you gone down to the county commissioners meeting where you could speak to them because of Nathan Savage being the head of our voter registration?
I spoke to the board, I spoke to the judge of elections. And the judge of elections, I said, should anyone other than the county be sending us election ballots or information? I was told emphatically no, the county should be doing that. So my question is, why is the state government in our state sending fraudulent or misleading information to our voters and our people in this area? This, this is not electoral malpractice? You know, listen, if that man, if, if he wasn't supposed to be in office, his name should not have been allowed to be on that ballot. And those of us who voted for change are tired of this. I can tell you right now, we voted for change, and what we got is, well, we don't like this guy, so we're just gonna pull him and take him.
Right.
And Mr. Mayor, I respectfully say that is I did have one other point, which I was gonna share with you, but I will leave it another time.
All right, we'll do it.
Mr. Mayor, Jesse Storm, Brokers Realty Property Management Company, here in Shamokin. I stand before you today, asking for additional time, which I had sent in with prior correspondence, which I'm disappointed that was not brought up in the correspondence section covering all of the different ordinances that you guys are looking to have for a second reading tonight. The biggest issue, many big issues here that need to be had, I, I first would request that we hold hearings on each and every one of these ordinances so the public can actually get time to just to hear the hearing and speak in regards to the hearing. Some of these things are non-sigual items in these ordinances that are being read in. First of all, the trash can ordinance. This is a 20-gallon trash can. Most people in Shamokin use 36, 40-gallon, 96-gallon toders for families of five, where you're putting in a 13-gallon kitchen trash bag into something like this would ultimately take somewhere in the neighborhood of seven to 10 of these trash cans. This trash can here would not meet code because it says leak-proof and waterproof, and the manufacturer of this trash can has air holes in the bottom of it, so when you go to pull the trash bag out, it lets it pull out, so there's not a vacuum sear. I found online that you can buy 20-gallon cans that almost look like a drum, that have a rubber seal to go around the top with a lid and a crimp ring that locks it down, so that way if it spills over, it's now leak-proof and waterproof, water can't get in, nothing can get out. My concern is removing the current trash cans that people have and replacing them with this means that you're gonna have a lot of these little trash cans blowing down the street. On top of that, in this legislation, under B2, it says a sufficient number of containers shall be provided. So the question I have for the city is, are you buying every citizen, every homeowner in, in Shamokin these trash cans and providing these trash cans as this code is written? This goes on to stipulate where, where these trash cans can be kept, and my concern with that in being in real estate is putting these trash cans behind a home where there is no front access to the front street to bring the trash cans back out. There are many homes why bother? Nobody's paying attention. I, I request to hear about all of these. I mean, nobody's, nobody's taking anything seriously, why bother coming here? Go ahead, ladies.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Brandy Finney, this is my first meeting here due to being told about the ordinance with the trash cans. I am here to speak my mind on this. I really think that there should be alternatives made to it as, as well as what you guys have already put in. I do not feel, on my personal level, I have eight people in my home. I have got two trash cans outside of my home, one is a 55, 60-gallon trash can with a lid, because that's what the ordinance states. The other one's about 38 gallons with a lid. They sit in front of my home, they're not impeding my sidewalk in any way, shape, or form. I have eight people, that's a lot of trash. I have six kids. It's a lot of garbage in a week, no offense, and I pay by the can. So if I have 15 of those cans sitting in front of my house, I have to pay per can for my trash bag. I pay per bag. That's a lot of money out that I don't have on a fixed income. I drive a school bus for a living. Six kids, I do home healthcare, my husband works a great day. We don't have the money. It's going to be an imposition, it's going to be a financial burden on our family, along with other families that I know that have a ton of kids. They don't see it. Can't they put something else in there saying, if you build a way to contain it in front of your home where it's not unsightly, because I get you guys want to clean up Shamokin, I'm for it too. My kids and I go around every year for the last seven years that we have lived in this town and do litter pickup. We don't ask anybody to help us, we just do it. You can ask Brenda, when she was on the other place, we went in and got trash bags from her. And said, hey, we're doing litter pickup. And then you just put it in the side can over here, no big deal. You guys, I just feel that they need to work with the residents more. I own my home, I don't rent. I pay my taxes, I better my community. There has to be more than just, this is what you have to do, end of story. You have to give us options. I don't have access to my backyard. I have a house and another house attached here that's a red X house that is keeping me from improving my own home because the guy lives in New York. He's got trash all over his yard, in the back and the front, no way he does nothing about it. You guys have got to give residents another option other than just put your trash out back and drag it through your house if you don't, if you can't get it out front. It's disgusting, it's gross. And that's what I wanted to say about it. I don't think it's right. Brandy Finney.
Thank you. My math, I had spoke to everyone earlier, and we did increase the size of the containers to 50-gallon.
Thank you, sir.
So are you, Scott, that are you saying the mixed management and all of these other companies?
Big square with our 96-gallon toders?
No. If, if, if it's a solid container with a lid, nobody's gonna bust your butt over. But if that's not the, so you can't, you can't sit there and hold, Scott, and this is my issue, okay? You can't sit there with a set of rules and, and ordinance that you guys pass and say, well, this is the ordinance. But we're gonna make a special exception for this, and we're gonna make a special exception for that. You either abide the law or you don't. Write it, write the legislation, write the law that fits our community. Write it so it fits our community. Because, you know, if code enforcement comes in and code enforcement says, hey, look, front of your house is peeling and chipping, I'm writing a citation for that. Or you've got a trash bag sitting in front of your house, I'm writing a citation for that. But the neighbor sitting there with 96-gallon toder, and that's not what the ordinance says, why is he not writing that fine also? We, we either have
I'm not familiar with the 96-gallon.
Those bin rollers on wheels, those toders, they're called toders. 96-gallon toders are provided by mixed management, they're provided by corporate companies out here that, that provide trash trucks. They are not leak-proof, they are not weatherproof. I mean, the, you know, having a trash can with a lid is one thing, but putting a language in there that says waterproof and leak-proof? You can't get that unless you go to a $180 barrel with a ratchet hook. Let's, let's, let's create the language so it works for our community. No one else in this state requires a waterproof and leak-proof trash can. You know, I mean, my suggestion would be, let's look at the trash haulers. What, what are the trash haulers using? 96-gallon toders? Why don't we create the legislation that says maximum size, 96-gallon todes, 96-gallon toders, maximum size, and remove the language of waterproof and leak-proof? Yeah, mine's very similar to that, except it's only like 46 gallon, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have an issue with that.
And, and remove, and remove the language of waterproof and leak proof, it requires a lid.
Those are minor changes.
I mean, Scott, did you read the correspondence I sent to you guys about a lot of these things?
No, because I'm having issues with my email. I got to get with Larry.
Can we move on? Are, are we getting a second vote on that tonight? Or second reading?
No, Mr. Greco said that they are minor changes.
You have a counsel, I just didn't even read it.
I'm sorry?
Counsel just said they had not a chance to read the correspondence on, on what we just said, what I sent over on Friday. I mean, some of these things don't have minor changes. Some of them are, are, are pretty.
Didn't say counsel.
Scott Robyn just, Scott Robyn just said he hasn't had a chance to read the correspondence I said, that I sent. Did any, any of the other counsel have, uh, uh, not a chance to read the correspondence I sent?
Mayor, can we move on?
Okay, at this time, I need a motion to accept the minutes of the city's motion. Council meeting on March 14th, 2022, the regular council meeting.
And a question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. You guys have it?
Okay, motion to approve the bills from March 2022 is listed on the bill list.
Second.
Anything on the question?
Mr. Robyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Anis?
Yes.
Mayor Alrick?
Yes.
The motion carries, three a's.
Okay, directory reports, account finance.
The treasurer's report of the bank balances as of March 30th, or April 1st, 2022, general fund balance, $610,156.32. Total liquid fuels balance, $83,625.60. Total library balance, $46,832.41. Total capital projects balance, $5,954.83. Total sinking fund number one, debt service, $196,111.51. Total sinking fund number two, recreation balance, $26,673. Total street lighting balance, $9,032.19. Total zoning grant balance, $50,000. For a total balance in all accounts, $1,028,385.86, submitted by City Treasurer Brenda Scandal.
Thank you. Skip parks and buildings, and streets and public improvements. We'll go on to public safety.
Total calls for the month of March, rescue and emergency service calls, seven, but 10 calls for six, hazardous conditions with no fire, five. Fires, four, false alarms, four, and two service calls. Total for the month were 26, total personnel were 65, total in-service hours were 64.31, total man-hours were 187.02, and we served nine different municipalities. Call office total revenue connect, collected was $3,258.50. Complaints addressed, 62, 11 over 151 closed, nine coke tickets issued, 14 notices of violation sent, two citations written, five landlord inspections, and 13 posted unfit.
Thank you. Chief Psycho?
Thank you, Mayor. Our statistic reports for the month of March, criminal arrests were 16, non-traffic citations were one, traffic citations 16, warnings three, parking tickets 136, parking citations 14, code tickets 11, total calls 1,199, and 4,441 miles patrolled. Also, Mr. Mayor, respectfully, at the end of the meeting, we have a short executive session, reference to personnel.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, under new business.
At this time, we're going to convince one to seven, we're going to exclude number one and vote on that separately. So therefore, two, three, four, five, six, seven, we have a motion to accept and approve.
They're based on items two through seven.
Second.
Second.
No, because we're spending money.
Okay. Mr. Robyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Anis?
Yes.
Mayor Alrick?
Yes.
The motion carries, three a's. Now we'll go back to number one. Request a motion to approve Oliver's Cigar Lounge Kentucky Derby event on the 7th of May, 2022, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m., closing the independent street from Liberty to Orange. Now, wait for it.
Any questions?
Yeah.
After the motion.
The request said possibly? Or was it five stalls you want?
No, sir, I believe it is possibly.
It said possibly, but it's only asking about the bag five meters.
The bag five meters, if you look up the street, you know, the bag long.
So therefore.
So I'm going to assume that he means he wants to close with a five parking stall.
I assume, sir, based on this, and Mrs. Anis, what that view?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the closing of five parking stalls.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yes.
You have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. You guys have it? Okay, moving along. Yeah, okay. So we'll leave those individual.
Yeah.
Request a motion on the recommendation of the city treasurer to close four bank accounts, dating the firing of DOJ, or whatever you want to call it, in expense in prior homes, repair, and capital projects accounts. There's no longer a need for these. Some of them have been open for some time, and therefore, under recommendation of the auditor and DF47 coordinator, Mrs. Scandal as the treasurer, we need a motion to close it.
Second.
Second.
Councilman Robyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Anis?
Yes.
And Mayor Alrick?
Yes.
The motion carries, three a's.
Request a motion to approve the city of Shamokene paying annual membership dues of $30 to the Shamokene Creek Restoration Alliance.
Second.
Second.
On a question?
Councilman Robyn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Anis?
Yes.
Mayor Alrick?
Yes.
The motion carries, three a's.
Is there anything under unfinished business?
Not to mention that, sir.
Ordinance committees request a motion to appoint Jackman Belania to the planning committee to replace Eric Seidel, who resigned from his position effective December 31st, 2021, term expiring May 20th, 2024.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all broke off.
All calling out.
Mr. Robyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Anis?
Yes.
Mayor Alrick?
Yes.
The motion carries, three a's, to appoint Belania to the planning committee.
Solicitor report.
Missouri Board of One.
Yes.
I'm just going to ask Jeff for our EMA. Did you have anything for us tonight?
No, no.
We're best there.
No, no problem.
Okay, after your solicitor report, Attorney Greco.
Number of ordinances for second reading, the first one being second reading of ordinance 22 dash two governing sidewalks. Council of City of Shamokene, under the authority of third class city code, hereby amends ordinance number 458, prohibited instructions on this section was changed, so rated in its entirety, section 458 dash 14A. Construction maintenance replacement of any permanent or temporary structure encroachment, advertising signs or obstruction upon or over any sidewalk or any public street in the city, other than those permitted by the building code, the zoning code, is prohibited, provided, however, that the owners or occupants of properties abutting a sidewalk may place temporary obstruction such as tables and display racks upon sidewalks, immediately abutting such property upon a sidewalk, abutting any other property with the permission of the owner or occupant thereof, so long as such obstruction and encroachment does not interfere with the rights, excuse me, of the public to traverse said sidewalk safely, conveniently, not must leave at least 48 inches for traverse. Owner or occupant of the property abutting the sidewalk may upon obtaining a permit, therefore, the Bureau of Code Enforcement, place tables and chairs upon the sidewalk, immediately abutting such property from which food and beverages may be dispensed, provided that the same shall not interfere with the rights of the public to traverse the sidewalk safely and conveniently. Any such establishment operating permit must also be in full compliance with the statutes, ordinances, and applicable regulations, and furthermore, does not grant any additional rights under any permits or licenses issued by the Commonwealth. The penalties are not less than 100, nor more than 500 for violation. So that would conclude the second reading of that ordinance. Do you want to do the?
The transepta?
I think so. It's just the case confusing.
I need a motion.
Second.
Your second, Pat.
Can we have another question?
Counsel. Councilman Robyn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Anis?
Yes.
And Mayor Alrick?
Yes.
The motion carries in regards to that ordinance, three a's.
Okay, the, on number two, second reading of ordinance 22 dash 03, line of content ordinance. This is an ordinance to be entitled registration of rental property, provided for purpose, intent, and applicability of the ordinance, requiring registration and maintenance of certain rental properties by owners, provided for penalties, enforcement, as well as evaluation, notation, reduction of the registered real estate within the city per codification and effective date. The city desires to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of its citizens through the pretty much renumbering of the existing ordinance that's been previously adopted. We're gratifying that, but also include a third-party registration resource called ProChamps, and the city wishes to move its rental registration process to benefit the permanent enforcement office, as well as landlords in the city of Shamokene.
Hold the motion.
Second.
Second.
Anything on the question?
Councilman Robyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Anis?
Yes.
And Mayor Alrick?
Yes.
The motion carries, three a's.
Item number three, second reading of ordinance 22 dash four, garbage ordinance. Council of City of Shamokene, under the authority of the third-class city code, is amending ordinance number 288, solid waste as follows, preparation and storage. Item B, which is the major amendment, any person accumulating or storing garbage in private or public property in a municipality for any purpose whatsoever, including waste being stored temporarily for during your collection, shall place the same or cause the same to be placed in sanitary, closer, covered containers in accordance with following standards. Containers used for storage of useful waste shall be of metal, plastic, or fiberglass construction, rust and corrosion resistant, equipped with lids, waterproof, and leak proof, except in the case of bulk containers, while not exceeding, as discussed, 96 gallons in capacity. Okay, with the, the leading waterproof and leak proof. A sufficient number of containers shall be provided by the landowner to contain all municipal waste that are required to be placed in containers generated during periods between regularly scheduled collections. Municipal waste to be collected on a door-to-door basis shall be prepared for such collection following manner. All garbage shall be drained of hazardous liquids and wrapped in paper, replaced in plastic bags before being placed in the waste storage containers previously described. All ashes shall be free of any burning material before being deposited for collection. All garbage refused to green recyclable materials shall be deposited in approved receptacles. All garbage containers under storage areas shall be located where property served and on the city street, right away, or city alley, driving surface, as to obstruct traffic, or in a sidewalk areas as to obstruct pedestrian traffic. Storage areas shall not contain discarded household appliances, garbage, building materials, or any other material unless picked up and removed at least weekly. Storage areas shall not be located in the front yard, front sidewalk, or front porch. Storage areas located in the side street, near corner lots of any residential property shall be screened from view so that the garbage and rubbish receptables not openly and prominently visible for the streets. Overflowing garbage containers scattered garbage and rubbish piles on premises in the city are prohibited. All garbage and rubbish containers shall be covered. The garbage, trash, and refuse may not be piled so that it's above the top of the container. Receptacles shall be moved from storage area to the pickup area not more than 24 hours prior to the scheduled pickup time, or returned to the storage area not more than 12 hours after the scheduled pickup time. No person except the occupants of the property in which a waste container is placed and authorized collector shall remove the lids of the container, remove the contents thereof. Municipal waste of a highly flammable or explosive nature, or highly infectious or contagious refuse, shall not be stored for ordinary collection, but shall be disposed of in accordance with directions of the municipality. There ends the second reading of that ordinance.
Scott, very important, number nine. Number nine, very important. You take the authority away from the police to go through the trash and set out the street without a warrant.
Hey, can I have the motion?
Second.
I'll second it.
On the question?
I have a question, and I just want to double check, and I'm pretty sure that, um, this was always in the ordinance that storage containers could not be eaten on your front porch, front yard, or sidewalk. But that wasn't a change, that's the thing. That was in the prior ordinance as well.
Yeah, it was. It's kind of just taking sections and just spilling.
Well, they were in the property served, and not on the city street, right away, or city alley, driving surface, as to obstruct traffic, or on the sidewalk area, as to obstruct pedestrian traffic. They're not blocking the sidewalk.
So if it's not on a sidewalk, similarly, never.
So if it's not on a sidewalk, someone else put it out there. Yeah.
Yes.
So we have a motion, second, uh, any other discussion or not? Can we roll call, Mayor?
Yes. Absolutely.
Mr. Rowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Anis?
Yes.
Mayor Albrecht?
Yes.
The, um, ordinance passes, three days.
Item number four, the property maintenance ordinance under twenty-two dash five. In ordinance of the City of Shamokin, in San Juan County, amended property maintenance standard ordinance. Uh, city council authorized upon language to be amended in chapter four oh six, section ten of City of Shamokin. A certain document which is on file, um, city clerk, and being marked and does it end the two thousand eight International Property Maintenance Code. And, uh, is hereby adopted as a property maintenance code of the City of Shamokin. I'm also, that's a danger for regulating and governing conditions, maintenance of all property, buildings, and structures. I provide for standards for supply utilities, facilities, and other physical things, conditions essential to ensure that structures are safe. Cemetery input for occupation, years in the condemnation of buildings and structures unfit for human occupancy and demolition of such existing structures as herein provided. Provided for the issuance of permits and collection fees therefore. Each and all the regulations, provisions, penalties, conditions, and terms of the said two thousand eighteen International Property Maintenance Code. Uh, and inserting within the sections of the code, the City of Shamokin, through what? That would end the reading of, the second reading of the property maintenance.
Letting in a motion?
Who makes the motion?
Second. On the question?
Mr. Rowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Anis?
Yes.
Mayor Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries three days.
Item number five, second reading of ordinance twenty-two dash oh six, ticket ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Shamokin. Commending the appearance ticket ordinance to include updated references. City of Shamokin wishes to update the standards adopted for property maintenance. Under chapter ninety-three, the City of Shamokin, quality of life violations, violation of following sections. Other International Property Maintenance Code, appropriate Shamokin ordinances shall be deemed to be quality of life violations as defined herein. Reinforced in a matter of set forth in this ordinance. Provisions of any article shall be enforced by police officers, code enforcement officers, eminent public officers from their pool. Enforce the laws of municipality. And city council may from time to time, change, increase, or decrease those sections to be covered under this chapter by resolution passed at a regular meeting. Uh, the following sections will be included on a ticket and have the associated references. IPMC three oh two, health, comfort, safety, sanitary conditions. IPMC three oh two point four, fresh grass weed. IPMC three oh two point eight, vehicles drunk and abandoned. IPMC three oh eight, dumping and littering, rubbish, and garbage. SH Shamokin Animals one thirty-two, SH two forty-five, alpha herming. SH four fifty point sixteen, municipal waste. SH four five eight, two fives, snow removal. Uh, the ticket amounts are for first violation, a twelve-month period, twenty-five dollars. For second violation, in a twelve-month period, seventy-five dollars for a third offense. Within a twelve-month period, one hundred and fifty dollars for the fourth offense. And all subsequent offenses within a twelve-month period, ticket shall be issued in amount of three hundred dollars. That concludes the second reading of ordinance twenty-two dash oh six.
Can I get a motion, please?
Second.
Second.
On the question?
Mr. Rowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Anis?
Yes.
Mayor Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries three days.
Is there anything under citizens comment?
Jesse Storm. Calling Shamokin Homes. I'm sad to see what everyone has done here tonight. Uh, what people are failing to provide is, I spent hours putting together correspondence and emailing to everyone to understand what issues there were within these legislations. And earlier when I was gonna speak about it, everybody was snickering and talking to themselves and not paying any attention. But what I propose now is under title sixty-five, um, under Pennsylvania code. You guys did the second reading, you can't vote on these motions for three days from af- after the reading. So you guys voted and accepted something in violation of code. Secondly, the, the U C C codes that you passed, which is the property maintenance code, it's never been submitted to the state thirty days prior to your first reading. Uh, there are a lot of legal issues with this. That's why I asked for hearings to be held, so we could actually discuss it, get it out there. But at this point, you, you guys thumb your nose at the law, yet you pass law that is unenforceable at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah. Yeah, well, at this time, there'll be no further business, with the exception of the executive session for personnel matters. When we return to the meeting, we'll be here.